It's 6:30 and I'd like to call the Board of Selecting to order. Do I hear a motion to set the agenda?
Yes.
So moved by Ms. Carron, all in favor?
Aye.
4-0, motion carries.
How many constituents voted to make the order at 6:30?
And they don't vote. We don't know.
Yeah. We're all getting there, huh?
They're way gone.
I never did it in the first meeting as a chair.
Well, sadly, you should.
That's true. Never did.
You should take it.
No, actually.
Blacked out early. And I will call the meeting of the Joint Select Board and School Committee to order. Sometimes I can read with this, sometimes I can't. This is the second of three joint meetings of the Select Board and the School Committee to fill the vacancy on the School Committee created by members resignation. We are committed to an open, fair, and respectful process and have taken the following steps to make sure this will happen. In accordance with Massachusetts General Law Chapter 41, Section 11, the School Committee notified the Select Board in writing of a vacancy on the committee due to a resignation. A process to fill the vacancy was then determined. On August 5th, we notified the community of the opening on the School Committee through the town and school websites, the local newspaper, and announcements at regularly scheduled town committee meetings. We asked interested citizens to submit a resume and a letter of interest to the Town Select Board office. Eight people responded, and we thanked them for coming forward. We then sent the applicants three questions to answer in writing by September 6th. All complied. We will make all documents available on the town and school websites on Friday, September 10th. We will interview four people tonight. We interviewed four people last night. The interview schedule was created in alphabetical order. We will be voted to fill the vacancy in an open meeting on September 15th. Our hearings will be broadcast on Facebook Live and will be available the next day on Situate Community TV YouTube. Our format for tonight will be as follows, and it's the same as it was last night. I will ask each candidate to introduce themselves, explain why they want to serve on the School Committee, and if appointed, will they run for a full term in the spring. This introductory statement should be three minutes or less. I will then ask each committee member to ask a question, alternating between the Select Board and the School Committee. Applicants should keep their answers to three minutes or less. Any remaining time will be used for follow-up questions, if there are any. No interview will take more than 30 minutes. Committee members will be given a ranking sheet to be completed and returned to the ranking in the Select Board office by the end of Business Day on September 13th. She will compile the results into one summary document, which will be distributed to committee members at the September 15th meeting. A discussion and vote will follow. The applicant appointed will serve the balance of the term until the upcoming town election in the spring. Does anyone on the committee have any questions? I do know we have an issue related to Yonk Board, but I think we can discuss that after we're done with the interviews. All right. So first up, we have Jennifer O'Neil. Good evening.
Hi. So for those of you that don't know me, I'm Jen O'Neil, and I have lived in Situate for 23 years. My husband and I moved here when we decided we were going to live the American Indian by house and started family, and we chose Situate. All three of my children have grown up here. We're educated in Situate Public Schools, with the youngest graduating in June. Why do I want to be on the School Committee? I've been active in the schools for many years. As I was saying earlier, yesterday was the first day in 17 years. I didn't have no meal, get on the bus to go to school, so it's a bittersweet for me. PTO, school councils, I was active at Shore and Coors, and also very active by going to School Committee meetings over the last several years. So about a year ago, a few people approached me and asked me if I would be interested in running for a School Committee seat, and the timing wasn't right last year. And I had thought about the upcoming election, running for a seat on the School Committee, and when the vacancy came available, I researched it and thought it would be, you know, why not now? I have the time. So that's me in a nutshell. I don't know if any people will ask any questions. Anything else, let me know.
Well, why do you want to serve on the School Committee?
So, to me, I think public education is very important. I believe in public education. Like I said, all three of my children have gone through the Situate Public Schools. One of them started the day after his third birthday, right from early intervention, so PCC around to graduation. My kids go to public universities. Public education is very important. But I also think that the public school in your town are just, it's the next generation that we have to serve. You know, my kids are through it now, but I want to be there. I want to be committed to the next generation that we have to educate, because, you know, if you don't have good public schools, really, you know, that can bring with town down. So that's really why, one of the reasons I want to.
And finally, will you run in the spring if you're appointed?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. Mr. Long?
Thanks for having me, Jen.
Thank you.
You know, obviously, as you've seen in a number of our School Committee meetings, there's a lot of divisive topics that we have come to us. So for you, what would your approach be when the issue first comes to the School Committee employee through, who else have they got?
So from what I've seen of divisive issues recently, you know, one that comes to mind is the starting school before Labor Day or starting school after Labor Day, always a big decision here in Situate. I would, of course, listen to the community. I know that in the past you've done polls and things like that, you know, reach out to them. But also, how would it impact, you know, the education of our students? Because I think first and foremost, we have to remember that that's what Situate Public Schools are here to do, is to educate the students. So my decisions, although I will say that I would always vote to start school after Labor Day as a parent, my decisions as a School Committee member would be based on what the needs of the community are and the education of our students.
Mr. Ben Yehati?
Thanks. Hey, Jen. Jen's also very active on our Rec Commission right now.
Yes, I am, very much. And I do know that you serve on two committees in town. I did research that before I submitted my...
Peter's going to talk to you about that in a minute. So I'll kind of stick, you know, my kind of talk about the divisive issues that are going to town right now or in the school system right now, and I'll just kind of ask your opinion on a couple of them.
Okay.
We've got the diversity issue that's going on and the racial issues that have popped up in the school, as well as the mask wearing and the low learning and all that sort of stuff. Where do you fall on those two topics and what are your thoughts on them?
So I'll take masking first. I was very happy that Desi made the decision and that the School Committee did not have to make that decision. In terms of masking, I am pro-mask but anti-manding. So I do think people need to have choices. But with that said, you know, I would still look at the data, the information, you know, what's coming, you know, what's coming in. Is it, you know, right for our high school students, who may be all vaccinated, to have to wear masks if they then are, you know, met that threshold? You know, can we let them not wear masks? I would say yes, you know, we meet the threshold, you know, that's been set by Desi, that they should be able to remove the masks if they want to, because you can also wear one if you wanted to. So that's where I stand on masks. Diversity, equity, and inclusion. Again, I believe in the process of hiring the DEI coordinator. I think that Jamil Adams is a wonderful addition to Situate Public Schools. I've met with him, met with Shore, seeing how, when I was serving on Shore, how we could help him, you know, with the issues that he's facing and how could we help him out at the high school. In terms of inclusion, I was very active early on in Coors Foundation. So again, they were all about inclusion. So I do feel that those are important issues. And how they impact the education of our students really is how you have to go down the size of those issues.
Yeah, okay. So just to, so you believe it had positive impact? The inclusion of that in the curriculum and in the school system?
I think it had a positive impact, but I also feel that, you know, everyone has to come to the table when decisions are being made. What's going to impact our curriculum? Well, let's bring in these superintendent and talk about that, that she's the expert there. How is it going to, you know, impact the academic excellence? Well, it's, everything has to come to the table when we're making those type of decisions. But again, the School Committee's role is to make sure that we are meeting the needs of our students, number one, and doing it within the budget, number two.
Hey, Jen.
Hey. Ms. Long?
Hi, Jen. Not including the two topics that we mentioned, other priorities that you would like to see addressed in the school district, and why?
So yes, fees, and not just student parking. I was so happy to see that the full day kindergarten fee has been removed. I believe the current senior class was the first class to have full day kindergarten, and there had been a fee in place every year until this year. So I was really happy that they were able to remove that fee. I'd like to see other fees, you know, looked at. Fee for busing. I mean, in some families, it's a lot of money for them, and they do need busing. The fee for sports at the high school. Again, I understand that everything has to be, you know, looked at when it comes down to the budget, but let's find ways that maybe we can work to reduce or remove some of those fees. That would be something I'd really like to see. And you know someday that student parking is going to go away.
Lauren?
Thank you. Hi, Jen.
Hi.
Thanks for coming forward. You have a, you know, a great path to this level, you know, committing so much time to the students and the schools that your kids have gone through. So thank you for all that volunteerism. Thank you. From that, could you describe for me what you think is the most pressing issue, aside from DEI or mask putting, you know, that aside, parking that for a minute?
Aside from COVID.
But, you know, it's a long-term position.
It is, exactly.
Just kind of looking to see what you think is the most pressing issue.
I think it's important that we prepare our kids for life after Situate. I've sort of launched three children out to the world. They've been launched out to the world, and it's really important that they're ready to go. And, you know, in case my children, they've gone out to college, but some of their friends have gone into the military, they've gone into workforce, they've gone up to trade school. So I think it's really important that they are ready to take on, you know, the world outside of Situate. But that doesn't start in ninth grade at Situate High School. It does start, you know, with UCC kindergarten. You know, it starts there, you know, the building blocks of learning start there. So I think it's important that we, you know, hire the best teachers. We make sure that we invest in the best curriculum. We have great leadership, and right now, we are in a great position, I think, with the leadership team that we had. I mean, I was preparing for this and packing away some stuff for my kids and noticed their school diplomas were there. And 2017, 2019, and 2021, each one was signed by a different superintendent. So I think it's really important that we have a good, strong superintendent. I'm confident we do right now. I think he's brought in a great leadership team and build from that. And, yeah, I guess that's really, thank you.
Ms. Brenna Lainey.
Hi. Hi. So I'm Leigh, and you have such great experience with all of your work with all the various committees and your roles in town and just so much knowledge of how Situate kind of works. So if you were to be on the School Committee, obviously, you already know this, but just, you know, our roles kind of go from, you know, committee member of important committees to sort of like decision maker, and it gets black and white sometimes.
Right.
We have to make the difficult decision for, you know, not just what's best for our own child, but
Right.
be it a relic of all children in the school, and hopefully, our own children also benefit from those decisions. So that being said, since relationships change, what should a School Committee member's relationship be like with a superintendent and parents and staff?
So I think collaboration. I mean, that's going to be the word of the day. Everyone needs to work together. Every voice needs to be heard, but that doesn't mean every voice is right. In terms of working with the superintendent, I think that, first of all, hiring a good superintendent is the role of the School Committee. They get that right, and everything else should fall into place. But there also has to be accountability. And I think it's important for the School Committee to track on some of those, you know, issues. It's the superintendent's job to run the day-to-day operations of Situate Public Schools. But it would be the School Committee's role to be sure that those are being run, you know, based on the policies that are in place, you know, that the Situate Public Schools have put in, you know, School Committee have put into place. I think that that is important. In terms of parents, I mean, they are a very important role as well. I mean, every parent wants the best for their child. And I know that I've met a lot of people in my time in Situate at various, you know, points in my life, but there was a group of parents I met when we were on the opposite side of an issue, a very divisive issue, a few years back. And I went up to them after and introduced myself. I wanted to find out why, why they wanted, what they wanted versus why I believe the other side. And what we came to is, the common ground is that we all want what's best for our children. But the School Committee has the role of doing that within the policies that they have set, and some of those come right from the state. So really, I think that's the rule. But I do think parents need to be heard. I think it's important that parents are heard. They also should be directed as well to talk to the teachers, communicate with the principals, talk to, you know, people in the schools. And that's really how I thought, you know, for my kids' education. You know, my kids are with this teacher every day. They're the ones that see them every day. So it would be best for me to talk to the teacher versus, you know, firing off an email to Superintendent Burkhead, who's, he wasn't superintendent at the time, you know, Sue Martin at the time, firing off an email to her because something was going on in the classroom. I think it's important that people understand how, you know, those roles are supposed to work, you know, within the School Committee, within the schools.
Ms. Andrew Gudrich?
Hi, I'm Werya.
Good to have you.
Thank you for coming forward.
Sure, thank you.
Love reading your answers and everything. How would you?
Very short, to-the-point answers.
How would you kind of describe your leadership style, especially with things such as negotiating a teacher's contract or something like that?
So I kind of fall into sort of democratic leadership style. I want, like I said, I keep saying, every voice needs to be heard. That slows things down sometimes, though, because everyone wants to be heard. And I think everyone needs to be heard. But I also feel that at a certain point, you need to step in and say, okay, now we've all been heard, now we need to move forward. In terms of negotiation, I have a background in human resources. I've worked as an HR manager. I've worked, you know, in various roles in HR. So I've never negotiated a union salary, but I've definitely negotiated salaries before. And coming from the sort of company side, you always want to, you know, spend the least amount of money to get the best product, best, I should say, best candidate. So I do think that it's important that everyone's heard at the table. So I guess my leadership style is democratic, let everyone be heard, you know, but to the point, can't go on for hours and hours and hours.
Mr. Gates?
Thank you. Hi, Jen, thanks for coming.
Thanks, Peter.
It is odd that, I think that Jen has been our one constant at every, I've been on the board for four and a half years, I think Jen to every meeting. So it would be, I guess it would be interesting to see her on the other side of the table at some point. But, but being said, you kind of actually answered my general question that I didn't ask the other candidates. However, one of, you can go the answer of what Tony was alluding to, was that you are aware of other responsibilities of the School Committee outside of just Monday meetings.
I'm very aware of the responsibilities outside of just the Monday meetings, as well as, I think there's School Councils that you're assigned to. There's different committees, town committees. I don't know if it's the Select Board, and I know somebody's assigned to Rec Commission, different things like that, so well aware of those. I think part of me not going forward with a, you know, position on the School Committee the last few years has been because I still had children at home and needed to be available for games and concerts and different things like that. Now they're gone. They're not, I don't have that responsibility anymore. So I think my schedule is much more flexible. My work schedule is very, very flexible. So I have plenty of time to commit to committee, I guess.
You did, you kind of ran for Nicole, so I should kind of answer this. I'm going to change mine slightly, and also because you referenced it. You noted that we've been through three superintendents over the last five or six, five years theoretically, three, four, five years. Why?
Why?
Yeah?
So, I mean, Karthy left because it was just his time to leave. He wanted to move to South Carolina, so he left. And then the superintendents between Karthy and Burkhead wasn't a good fit for Situate. It just wasn't a good fit, and that happens sometimes. But I think the process used by the School Committee to hire our current superintendent was transparent. It allowed every voice to be heard, parents, teachers, students. And that, I think, helped get the superintendent we have now, which is a good fit for Situate Public Schools. He's brought in great leadership. I mean, I think there was a School Committee meeting of maybe last year, the first time Dr. Dutch, and I'm a huge Dr. Dutch fan, read his warrants. I think in 15, 16 years, I heard more about where our money went and that, you know, warrant reading than I did any other time. He was very transparent with that. So I think, have I answered your question?
Yeah, no, yeah, the question's really, why do you think superintendents have chosen not to stay here? Really is the question.
Well, but, I mean, being a superintendent is not easy. I don't think I'd want to do it. There's a lot, you know, it's not easy. There's all the education changes, a lot. I just know from, you know, the time my children started kindergarten to I have friends and family now who have kids in kindergarten, and I have just the difference in education. So there's also just parents, you know, and I was one of them. I was one of those parents because I want to hold the people teaching my children accountable. And I think they should be held accountable. And I think if you make good decisions and you have the backup for that, then you can, you know, stand by those decisions. And I think that we, at one point in time, had a superintendent in place that was not making good decisions, and any decision he was making, he wasn't really able to back it up. So I think that that's, and again, I don't want to keep knocking on this one particular person, but I do think that that's, you know, we went through that sort of pain of those three years. Some people might call it the butterfly effect, because if we had hired somebody different three or four years ago, we currently have the team in place that we have now.
Thank you.
So we have about 10 minutes for all the questions. Would anyone like to ask all the questions?
Oh, it's good.
Tell me.
So Jen, on most boards, and I've had on the Select Board here, everyone kind of has a different strength and a skill set that kind of brings the whole board, you know, in looking at different perspectives on different issues and really supporting each other. What are your strengths and skill sets that you're going to bring to this group that you think may be a little bit different than what they have now?
So, I mean, for me personally, my strength is my ability to build relationships, regardless of where somebody may stand on an issue. I want to find out, you know, why, let's meet on some common grounds. So I think my, you know, building relationships, being able to work collaboratively with people that I may not agree with is important. I think that's a strength I have. I'm not saying that the current board doesn't have that. I'm just saying that that's my strength.
Right.
So I think that's what I could bring to the table. But also, I think my knowledge and my history with Situate Public Schools. Again, there's been a lot of changes, but sometimes it is important to have that historical, you know, knowledge. You know, maybe when it goes down to time for budget. I mean, I remember some lean budget years when my daughter was in a sixth-grade classroom with 33 kids in one of those trailers at Hathaway because of budget cuts. I think it's important when, you know, parents come to the School Committee and say, we need even smaller class sizes. You have to be able to maybe have that historical perspective to say, well, we used to have this, now we're here, maybe we can work there, but we have to do it within a budget.
And the one thing I will add is that you have a unique experience seeing it from a lot of different angles. You've been involved in a lot of different groups that are attached to the school for different reasons. So I think that's...
I hold my fair share of wrapping paper and just getting applause and things like that. So, yeah.
You know, where regials have you been on?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Long?
So Jen talked a lot about accountability during your answers tonight. How, in your opinion, should board members in the town evaluate student and school performance?
So there are a lot of benchmarks that can be used. I know that some people poo-poo some of these US News and World Reports and things like that, but I do think it's important. And I know that those benchmarks may change from year to year, but, you know, I think that's one piece of information. I think MCAS, again, another piece of information. AP scores, you know, how many kids are taking AP exams? Why are, you know, why are so many students taking AP classes but not giving AP exam? I mean, I think there's lots of different benchmarks to, you know, for student success. Some of it is, I always felt like with MCAS, you always get the results from the previous year. Same with AP, you get the results from the previous year. So it can be difficult. So maybe come up with, I'm sure, there's benchmarks that the teachers have in the classrooms. I was reviewing what the new Assistant Superintendent is putting together, and it seems like she's going to have some great benchmarks to be able to evaluate how our students are doing. I mean, yeah, academic excellence is important. And that's, you know, what we owe our kids. We owe our kids an excellent education. So I think just benchmarks, grades like that. I answered your question. Yes, no, yes.
Anyone else? No?
Thank you very much for coming forward. Thank you.
And now we have Mr. Richard.
Hello?
Hello, how are you?
I'm great, are you?
Good. Did you get the three questions at the get-go here?
The three questions?
Introduce yourself, a little bit about yourself, why you want to be on the School Committee,
Sure.
and are you planning on running in the spring if you are appointed?
Yes, well, I'll answer the last one first. Absolutely would run in the spring. I ran in the last segment. It's our chairman, and I was trounced, so, but it was a great experience for me. I got to meet lots of people in town. I generally, when I started that process, didn't have a lot of friends in town. I moved here about eight years ago, and in that process, got to meet lots of people and really enjoyed it. It was a bit scary, you know, going out, knocking on people's doors, eating them, talking to them. It was, you know, got me out of my comfort zone, standing out in the cold spring, getting signatures in front of the supermarket with my daughter. You know, good memories, great things. I was happy to be a part of it. And the reason I did it was I thought that the school needed, was losing some focus as it related to academic excellence. The things that I raised in the campaign regarding that is that the current school goals don't have academic excellence spelled out in them. I think that's a mistake. I think we can improve that. I think that we had a better discussion when it comes to the issues of diversity, equity, and inclusion. I thought that some of the language that the School Board adopted was divisive in its fundamentals. And lastly, I ran because there were a lot of people that I got to know, people I knew, that were afraid to speak up. We've come to a point in our culture where speaking up is a cause for harassment. And it's terrifying. You shouldn't, that just shouldn't be what Situate is. It's not why I moved here. It's not why I got to like a lot of people in town. It's not been my experience, until I reached outside of my comfort zone and started to participate in lots of things. I never participated in Parents' Perspectives Facebook page. It just, it just wasn't something I felt comfortable doing. And even when I did, I could see what people, why they would be afraid. Even these particular School Committee meetings, when we have them on Monday nights, are incredibly intimidating. The first time I spoke at that meeting, I didn't want to say anything. I mean, who wants to speak here? And it's remote. It's even more intimidating when it's remote, because I don't get to see your faces, how you react to me. It's, so our culture has totally shifted. It doesn't allow people to speak up. And so what I hoped to do when I was running for a School Committee, and hope to do as part of the School Committee, is let people know it's okay to speak up. I want to encourage you to speak up. Doesn't mean I'm going to agree with you, but I want to encourage you to speak up, and I really want to know what you have to say. So those are the reasons... So those are the reasons why I ran. I mean, who I am, I grew up in New England, I grew up in Rhode Island. I moved away, I think Georgia Tech, a lot of culture changed 30, 30-odd years ago. There's nothing like a culture that really likes football until you had to experience it. I lived there for 14 years. I worked in a job that took me all over the world. I got to see places and people and meet people and work with them in a whole bunch of different ways. I got to, I mean, I got to go to India frequently, meet people, or to China, to Europe. They're all different. And as I said in my campaign, what I found most interesting is there was so much that we had in common. And one of the things that we most had in common is we wanted better for our kids. You could go to China, they could be different political view. They could be poor people that decided to send their kids, if their kids wanted to send to the city to work, they wanted better for their kids, and they wanted their families to know it. That was very powerful. And so that's why I came to be a decision. So that's why I'm doing this.
Good, you're right on three minutes.
Thank you.
Thanks so much, Jen. Good to see you again.
Good.
Chuckie, going off of your introduction, so one of the positives you've had from being in a Zoom meeting is, you know, last year we had 400 people that are coming to our school committee meeting. Very glad I was up at the chair at that time, sorry, Peter. I remember when the first person, Jen O'Neal, was literally the only person in the library. And the ability to get the community involved is very important, and I definitely agree with you there. So in your mind, what is the best way for a school committee to be able to reach out and have that conversation with the community so that people do feel comfortable coming back and sharing their opinions, whether it's in a meeting or some other venue?
Well, I don't think we're ever going to go back to the way it was. There'll be a lot of good things, bad things about that. But I think as it relates to what your question is, I think we should have to do both. I think that it is incredibly powerful to come home from dinner and be able to Zoom in and ask a question and participate. And similarly though, we can't give up on this aspect of our community. Being in a room with people, communicating with them, there is no substitute. And in fact, my question about being intimidated in the process, I think it's way more intimidating to communicate by Zoom. And I think in fact, and I've been in a lot of Zoom meetings with the school committee, it's interesting in those meets, a hundred and some odd people, and people speak up. Now, maybe historically, that's two more than normally every meeting, but still only two, right? And so there's something fundamentally, again, intimidating about that process. So we shouldn't be doing, we should give people the opportunity to come here and talk to you. We need to see people. We are social beings. We have to be connected with our community as people. Okay?
Mr. Benyer?
Thanks. Richard, how are you?
Great, how are you?
Good, thanks for coming in. I'll say one other question. So my next question is really about these issues that we talked about with, you know, masks and remote learning, and then also the diversification stuff. I'd like you to spend a second on your opinion of the masking and remote learning aspect, but your opinion is different than most of the other people that we've talked to so far regarding the diversification and other aspects of the school learning process. And I'd like to hear your thoughts a little bit more on that. You know, you said it's not one of the three core, you know, education is not one of the three core things. And most people think that the education process includes a lot of different components where you're not as, you're more focused on academics and some of those other things. So I'd like to hear your.
Yeah, no, so I think.
But I'll tell you what, start with the mask thing, because that'll take.
Oh, sure. I think that having the choice, our community having the choice to understand the local circumstances to make more proactive decisions as it relates to safety is something we should do. So with respect to masks, I think people should be vaccinated. I'm vaccinated, my daughter's vaccinated. I also respect the fact that younger kids and parents who have them are rightly concerned not to do that. And so when you get to masking, the questions really here are what's appropriate for the age and the kids in that class? So high school kids. I agree with where the governor's going on this. I think having a high vaccine rate and a low incidence within the facility gives us the flexibility not to have masks in high school. I think he's, I think he's got the right picture. It gets trickier, right, with younger kids? And we can't, as people who read a lot, neglect the fact that this virus is intrinsically more deadly for older people. I mean, kids haven't, you know, thank God, haven't had to, to experience a lot of severity. And so right now, kids are being damaged in the education environment by wearing a mask. You could listen to some of the school board meetings from last November. It was the elementary school teachers who said, our kids are having the hardest time, you know? Because it could, that's where the board, right? They're going to have hard times understanding what it takes to learn and speak. So we can't discount the effect on education, particularly for young kids, of masks. So right now, I think certain instances in our community don't warrant having a mask in the classroom if our teachers are vaccinated. I think it's their responsibility to be vaccinated because they are of the age group that is most susceptible to this pandemic. So I think I answered your question.
Answered the mask part, but I think you used a full three minutes.
That's correct.
Oh, didn't you do that?
Absolutely correct. The 45-second answer.
Yeah, so I'll get back to when I, when I come around and get it.
Who suggested? Ms. Ling Wong?
Hi.
Hi.
Before I ask my question, I want to say historically, there's only been like one person at school committee meetings. Before it was Jen, it was me. But my question is, you talked about your experience running for the position last year. Are there any other school or community groups that you would have taken part of in town? And can you just?
No, I haven't. I had, I participated to begin with in the advisory group, starting in September, with the advisory DEI group. That was really kind of my first foray to participating in different things within the community. So no, have not.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Karin? Sure. Hi, Richard.
Hi.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Thanks for coming forward. My question for you is, could you expand on your leadership style? I sense you have a very strong personality, which is awesome. So working in a committee and collaborating, explain to me how you would demonstrate your leadership style in different situations?
I think my leadership style has a lot of, has some positives and negatives. So just talk about the positives for a second. I would say I'm very interested in understanding why people think of what they think. I want to really understand how they come to their conclusions and opinions. And so that's a great thing, in my opinion. And I'm really open-minded. I can have an opinion and be willing to be, have my mind changed. It doesn't mean it would be easy, but I am willing to be open-minded. Now, having said that, what that means though is that I can have, and I have had people tell me this, a certain amount of overbearingness when it comes to wanting to understand what people think. Why do you think that? What do you think we should do? I really want to dig into the details of how people reach their understandings of that. So in the context of a five-person committee, I'm going, you know, Ms. Ling has a different opinion than I do on X, Y, Z topic. I really want to understand why Ms. Ling has a different opinion of that. Because maybe she, her opinions, her ideas and the reasons she came up with are really good, and I just didn't think of it. And yet, she'd have the opportunity to change my mind. And that's how I go about understanding and making a decision. I think, you know, as it relates to the school committee in general, leadership is incredibly important. If we demonstrate that we can listen to the person that we disagree with, and even if we don't agree at the end of that, but can do it respectfully, can do it in a way that we really value what they had to say, which is one of the reasons why I ran for the school committee, because I thought that was really lacking in our community. Boy, our school kids are going to love that. I would think that that's what we want our high school kids to see. I don't know that, you know, six-year-olds are going to pick that up, but certain high school kids are not going to be able to give that up.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Randali?
Hi, Richard.
Hi.
So, you know, public school systems have such depth and breadth in terms of responsibilities and roles and various staff and, of course, superintendents and parents. So could you speak to what a school committee member's relationship should be like with those parties? And sort of how you see, you know, certain chain command inside the schools?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure I quite understand the question. So my relationship as a school committee member to outside agencies.
What would the relationship be like as a school committee member and a superintendent, a school committee member and parents in our community, and superintendent and staff within our schools?
Right, so, well, there's two different relationships there, right? Once the public face is, they're the people that we represent. So whether they're special or not, they, and they live in the community, they are the people that we're trying to represent, their opinions. To the extent that they're different, right, and this was one of your questions, an entity is a political entity for a reason, right? So the implication is that they're trying to facilitate, they're trying to engage us in a way to change our policy. Because, so we have to recognize that's different than an individual participates in our program and is, or is taxpayer, and therefore, we have an obligation to try and represent their interests the best we can. And I said this in school committees, we also have sort of an obligation to ameliorate some kind of differences. So to the extent that parent X and parent Y don't agree on something, we should be the agent that tries to find a way that we can satisfy, partially satisfy. One may be one that we agree on and try and support as a policy, but we should also have a means of trying to ameliorate some of those differences. So that's where we, what I think our goal is. As it relates to staff and the superintendent, look, we're a board. And my experience with both having been on boards and having participated in boards is, the boards I've been on, the toughest board members were the ones that wanted me to succeed the most. They asked me the toughest questions, but man, they want me also to succeed. They valued the fact that I was building, and I valued the fact that they found reason to really question my assumptions. Because the point of a board is not to be a staff of the group which you're a board to, it's actually to bring a bunch of diverse outside opinions that are outside, in this case, education, to, and their experiences to the decision-making process. This is what we want out of our board, whether it's Coca-Cola or the school committee. Boards aren't necessarily places where they all agree. I mean, if you've sat enough of them, you know they own. But that doesn't mean they're not respectful. It doesn't mean that they're not trying to make that situation better. And even in disagreeing with the people and who they're trusted to lead, which is in this case, the school, that doesn't mean that they're anti-superintendent or anti-teacher, right? They want the best, and that teacher wants the best.
Thank you. Question, good, Rich.
Thank you for coming forward.
Sure.
Back to the, we were talking about academic excellence. To achieve that, what do our teachers need?
So in part and parcel, this is also like budgeting question. One of the things that you look at, when I looked at the budget as part of running, is what I discovered is that 70, 75% of the budget is personnel. It's basically teachers and contracts, and it's pretty much fixed. So there's not much you can do with it. The other 10, 15% is maintenance and kind of hardware, right? And then there's very small hard slice that's discretionary. So kind of in that context, the strategy takeaway there is really what we have here is an investment in a budget for people. And so this is back to leadership. So our teachers need to, they're going to, they're going to take direction from what we tell them is our policy, right? Because they are the people that have to implement. And as it relates to the resources they need, we have to make sure that whatever our policy is in alignment with, whatever those resources are, and that they, because they're the people that have to do it, they have to make sure that they're aligned with those things. So to some of the kind of controversial topics, if we're not aligned as to what the values of those controversial topics are, we're going to get bad results and bad decisions when the teachers intend to implement that, right? Because they're just going to go by what we wrote down, and they're just going to go by what's discussed in that school committee meeting. And if we don't express what those ideas were in the school committee meetings and help them flesh those things out, well, they're kind of left with some emails and some of those other things. So it's incredibly important that we set policy, set direction, give them leadership, and then recognize that what we're investing in is the people, teachers in this case. We don't make widgets, right? We make minds, and those minds are all from people. I hope I answered your question.
Mr. Gates?
Hi, Richard. Thanks for coming.
You're welcome.
Two-part question, unrelated. First one is, that's other candidates. Are you aware their responsibilities are included, in addition to just the Monday high school committee meeting?
Yeah, there are also responsibilities. And they're awesome both in the opportunity for me to break out of where I am and to get to meet more people in the community. They're also responsible because they're incredibly time-consuming. But I look forward to learning more about our community, our school. I mean, not just our school, but our community, and being involved in some of those things.
Okay, and Nicole rephrased her question, I think, a little bit. So your response to her kind of helped me to shift my question a little bit. We've been through three superintendents in the last five years, why?
I have only been here for a few years. In full disclosure, I haven't been terribly involved in what happened to those two pretendants. I listened to Jennifer, she probably had the best answer I listened to last night. I would say though, that in understanding that it's three, five years, really what you have here is one outlier, right? You have, you have a guy that was here historically that had, you know, a longer term, and you had a guy who apparently didn't fit, and then we have now. To the extent that if this doesn't work with our current superintendent, then at some point, we have to look inwardly at ourselves and just, and see if, like, we have a user error. Anytime my computers not work and I realize it's not the computer, probably me. The same thing here. If for some tragic reason, right, where Superintendent Burket isn't here two years from now, then we'd have to really look inwardly and see, is there something about how we're, how we're structuring ourselves, how we're communicating, what we think, or again, back to, are we in alignment with telling that person that's executing, intended to execute our policy with what they really think they're supposed to be doing? And so I don't have an answer for your question, but that's how we think about it. Thank you.
All right, we have about 10 minutes for additional questions.
Just another kind of question. What do you think are the current challenges facing school boards right now?
Well, look, I mean, you just have to turn on the TV and understand what the current challenges. Right now, in schools all around America, I think we're discovering, and this is controversially true, I didn't get to answer the second part of Tony's question, is the concepts of diversity, equity, inclusion. And I was outspoken in my campaign about, not, not the difference in the idea of what people traditionally understand those words to me, diversity, equity, inclusion, but how they have been reformed through what we've all come to know as critical race theory, critical social justice, right? And so the words and concepts that have come from that have now, I got to learn, actually have been in higher education, the education of teachers, for a very long time. And it wasn't there when I went to college, but a generation or so later, it was. And so what that means for us is that the idea that how we achieve social harmony is completely different now. In other words, so a perfect example is the idea of colorblindness, right? So when I was growing up in the civil rights movement, colorblindness was a pillar of the civil rights movement. I mean, we all know what Martin Luther King said about, like, character, how we judge people, right? That was the pillar, or one of the pillars of civil rights. Today, we're told colorblindness is bad, right? People have told us, from critical race theory advocates, have told us that colorblindness is white supremacy. That if you're advocating for colorblindness, you can't see racism. That's ridiculous. I mean, if colorblindness was a pillar of the civil rights, then it was, it was used, right, to address racism as part of civil rights. So how could it be white supremacy? And that leads you to the other thing. Critical race theory believes in the concept that your whiteness creates property that you, that can be restricted, right? So there's these concepts, ideas that come out of that and have been grabbed by a very extreme element that uses social media and the mechanisms of it to suppress and to call things that aren't true and to make us ashamed of them. They've made us ashamed of the founding of our country, the liberal idea in which our country was founded on. Life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, happiness. There's so many things embedded in that concept that speak directly. There's so many things embedded in that concept that speak directly to the education of our children. The concept of anti-racist is a critical race theory concept. It believes that you're either a racist or you're an anti-racist, and believe that racism is permanent in the society, and every policy, procedure, and interaction has to first be judged by whether it's racist or not. That's incredibly divisive. And the fact that we have embraced that language is divisive, and we should recognize it's intellectual, all you gotta do is read it. And that was one of the things that most struck me and caused me for concern when I started participating in that stuff. I didn't know anything about these topics. I read about them because I got involved in, got introduced to these terms and asked, don't you know that these terms are divisive and they come from this? Our select board actually had some of the same pressures to doubt that topic, and I applaud the fact that they did. But the school committee did. I think that you can actually revise that statement, make it better, make it more inclusive, eliminate the references that are built around critical race theory, you have to recognize that they are, and get more of our community involved and supporting this, in fact, to ameliorate the differences in our community. You can do that. I would never run for committee, social school committee, if you hadn't just done that. But you weren't listening, and that's why I decided to run.
Any other?
Yeah, I'll kind of piggyback on that. So, I mean, you can take an opinion, you can take a sense, you can take a word, and you can kind of twist it so that it, it has some counter meaning. But for you specifically, what is your feeling from a big picture view of the role of those types of education in our school system?
So, okay, that's a great question.
I don't want to get into this person said this, or this word, or this. What do you think the school, the kids in the school system should get out of?
So here's, here's why, here's where I come down. In, as relates to the education of our kids, what we have, what I'm concerned about is is that we replaced these fundamental ideas of liberal government that our country was founded on, and have integrated these ideas that are academically called ill-liberal ideas, those are critical of liberal ideas, so this is critical race theory. And they've, because the words sound the same, because equity sounds like equality, right? And they mean something different to that group of people, right? We substituted them in, and it actually led to our anti-racist statement for the school committee saying, our school system is currently systematically racist. That is just not true. Systemic racism is Jim Crow. Systemic racism is apartheid. Systemic racism isn't that we didn't emphasize the Tulsa race right in our curriculum. By the way, the Tulsa race right is in the history book, in the current history book. So this is the difference that's happening in our discourse. And so, do I think diversity, equity, inclusion is important? Of course I do. I've been all over the world, I've, I've, I've been working with people of so many different backgrounds and have been so moved by the fact that we have so much in common. And we have so much in common, not because we're different externally, but because we fundamentally are human and we have many of the same traits and things that we want for our families and kids, right? And this is the difference between this ideology. It first sees you as this thing that they can look at, say, you're different because you look differently, and therefore I can expect that I know something about your you. I know that you're an oppressor, unoppressed, I know that you're in the hierarchy of race, you're this. This is what's wrong with that, right? And this isn't what we should be teaching our kids.
And one more question, if anyone has one.
I have one. Completely changing the topic, sorry. So you talked about the, our first words mapping in, you know, the benchmarks there. What would your opinion be on a district mandated either vaccine requirement for our staff or for our students, or who it's available for?
Yeah, I mean, I'm comfortable with it because, I mean, the federal government's probably gonna make this decision for us based on what we're reading today, but given the nature of what we're dealing with, the virus, right? I'm comfortable with telling me I had to do it, but I did it anyway, right? I think that people have a responsibility to themselves to keep themselves happy, I mean, healthy. I think they have a response, I do think that we have responsibility to our community to make sure that, you know, we don't get them sick. It isn't, it is something that we have to think about, we're doing that. Do I think that the school system should tell all its teachers that they're gonna get fired or they're gonna have to get a vaccine? I don't, right? I think that, again, through leadership, I think through incentives, you can make, get people to do the right thing. Can you get a hundred percent of the people to do the right thing? Probably not, right? But you can get ninety-something percent of the people to do the right thing. I truly believe that. So, that's where.
Your talking point among companies and other school districts in the, in the country, so I was just curious, guess what, the response you gave earlier, what you had to say, thank you.
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
You appreciate it? Thank you. And now, Mr. Gates. And if you'd like to tell us about yourself, why you're interested in serving on the committee, and would you run, if you're a candidate?
Great. So thank you very much, everyone, for being here. Thank you for your stamina after two nights of this. So starting off on why we're motivated to run is a great question, a question I was facing a lot over the past few weeks as I've been talking to friends and family about whether they felt like to help with the committee, what they felt the committee needed. And one of the reactions was like, are you sure you want that? Have you seen the YouTube video of what the school board's been putting up lately? But I think that it's an important role in town and something that we need volunteers to step forward for, and I'm motivated to do it because after doing my research, I think I can help, talking to people. In the written materials I put together, I got my letter of interest in the responses to the questions, I put some of that for the conversation today too, so I'll try to synthesize that. Service has always been a part of my life, from early age, with voice helps, I've always looked for ways to volunteer, ways to help out with everything that's going on, volunteering with legal, with law student clinics, I serve on a nonprofit board right now. And what I'd like to do is find ways to give back to Situate. I grew up in Situate. At this point in my life, I think I have to call myself a townie. Both my, most certainly my grandparents raised their families here. I have lots of aunts, uncles, and cousins in town, new generations being raised here, family members who have been in our town and employees have served on the town boards. Towns run on volunteers, and without volunteers, nothing's gonna happen. So I'm looking for a way to give back. Education is important to me. I went through Situate Public Schools, like I had early, pretty much the same as it does these days, and got the foundational skills for my career that were diverse. I'm a patent attorney. I do a lot of, you know, persuasive writing, research, and discussing with people, recommending other perspectives, humanity skills. And so, science, engineering, mathematics, et cetera, all that blended together to make my career successful. I got those skills together with creativity from arts and music through public schools. It's important to me that my kids that are now going to the public schools get that same diverse education and ability to go through whatever career they want, or set themselves up for the careers that they want, as well as anybody else, who may be going into the military or into trades, or are some higher needs students who are just looking to get the skills that they need for independent living, or being able to work. Whatever the tools are that kids in the, if that's what the public schools should be setting up. So I'm motivated to do that in looking at the school committee over the past, you know, couple of years. There's a lot of times, especially with Zoom, where I'm sitting watching the conversations, geez, I wish this question would be asked. I wish we would just take it a little bit deeper, particularly for some of the divisive issues where people are really listening in and looking to figure out. And since I'm sitting there thinking, I wish this question would be asked, perhaps I could join the committee and be the one asking those questions to help advance the conversation and help address some of the questions that our community is raising. And we've talked about how more people are participating in school committee than in the past, which is great. If it's an access thing, excellent, we should find ways to continue to allow people to get that access. But if the reason why people are joining the committee or monitoring the committee is a concern about what the committee is doing, or a question of trust, because they're not certain the committee is doing the right things to really flesh out the issues or understand the community, the community's perspective, that's something we also have to get on here. And trying to figure out exactly why there is so much interest and what we can do to make certain that the community trusts the school system is excellent.
Three minutes. Did you answer the question about, will you run again?
I will.
Or, okay, good.
Intentionally.
Mr. Long.
You talked a lot about your own thought process and seeing how, you know, people who come and speak at a school committee meeting could be very strongly, you know, one way or another, on a topic. When you, or when you would look at an issue that arises, that, you know, comes to the school committee, they review, and then ultimately go on, what is your thought process for, you know, your process from getting from the beginning to the ultimate vote?
Yeah. So for any government decision, or really any decision, or for any entity, we should be looking at what's the justification for the policy, and trying to figure out what the right answer is, what is the actual driver of the policy, what's the end we're looking for, I think will be helpful. A lot of divisive issues, people end up getting lost in the details and maybe not even having the same conversation with one another. I'm the patent attorney, said, everything I deal with is complex technical subject matter that people are not familiar with, and everything I'm doing is negotiating, trying to get parties to agree, and so I have to educate people on the subject matter and then find the path to agreement. Usually what that involves is distilling it down, getting out of the details, out of the hit of details that people are gonna argue about, what's the core of it? And then finding the place that we can agree and building up in there. With the mask policy, you know, I can think of four different classifications for the mask policy, right? Are we trying to protect the teachers, right, everybody talks about how the students are least at concern for the virus? But the teachers there, the administrators, our staff, or are we protecting the high-risk students, the same way that maybe we would be thinking about kids in the classroom? If we're looking at that, then that's different than looking at the staff, where we're trying to protect everyone, individuals, keeping them from contracting the virus, all the individual kids, you know, that's something that maybe the schools can play a role, or maybe it's appropriate for individual masking decisions, if that's our concern. But I think when we're thinking about masking, any three of those are really the justification for the policy. What we're probably looking at is, what's the best way to keep the schools open and keep the kids open, keep the kids in school? And the best way to do that is to keep community transmission rates low. And the best way to keep community transmission rates low is to have masks in classrooms. If we're trying to keep the community transmission rates low, individual masking choices are not consistent with that. So we can all agree on what's the justification for the policy, then some of the details start dropping away, and it gets easier to find that path to agreement. And I think starting to distill the issue down, to get rid of the noise, is an easier way to do that. And that policy will, or that approach will work for complex issues as well as the student issues.
Mr. Benyon.
I guess my question, we talked about this last night, and I was especially, what is the, what is the issues that you think you're most interested in being involved in with the school committee right now?
So interested in doing the groundwork of the committee, I think is the first way to start, because the headline issues get attention right now, right? But a lot of the important work that the select board is doing, that the school committee is doing, is the unimerous stuff of just keeping the lights on. And so, I don't wanna be the someone who's coming in with a single issue, it's like, that's the thing I want to do. So willing to, you know, roll my switch into the honest work, just keeping the public tools running. But to give a deeper answer to it, what's really important right now, after a couple years of upheaval, is making sure that the schools are still performing in top-notch. The teachers have been there all along, doing their best work at keeping the students educated, monitoring their progress year to year, talking to their colleagues. But every principal brings a new set of initiatives, every superintendent brings a new set of initiatives, every assistant superintendent brings a new set of initiatives. And some things fall by the wayside, some things are more emphasized, and after a couple of years of upheaval, the teachers have been, you know, pulled in a couple different directions. And I think we really have to make sure that the things that haven't been done recently get done, and that we know that the schools are still succeeding. That's something the community is very concerned about right now. People are talking about the US News report and all that, which I think we need to figure out, what are the metrics that as a community we value? What are the metrics that we think are most informative of how our students are going to succeed, and then get the data to look at that? And I think we've gotta have a very clear process for surfacing that data, which is, you know, somewhere DEI can come in, making sure that we're not looking at the wrong metrics, or we're not collecting the metrics in a way that includes bias in the data. But, you know, we've gotta do some of the curriculum analyses that Ms. Driscoll was saying have been delayed in recent years, and so now as a result of that, we're doing multiple of them at a time. But make sure that the schools are still succeeding, and the things that need to be done to make sure that the students are being educated to the level that the community expects and the kids deserve, I think is the most important role.
Ms. Long.
Could you give us some examples of some strengths in our district, things that we should be proud of?
I think we have definitely a strong teaching corps, and everything that we're doing to prepare our students for college is great. We're definitely a strong set of AP classes. The students at the high school have a lot of opportunities with lots of clubs and lots of sports, different opportunities for them, and I think all of that is part of the educational experience. At the junior level, where my kids are, we have great resources to take advantage of, including more online learning, which not a lot of schools have access to them, but my own kids were doing a lot last year, and I'm frankly looking forward to them being able to do it this year, because some of the games that they were able to do really helped them thrive. My son was in first grade for hybrid learning, and I feel lucky to be able to say that he really succeeded well last year, that the structure happened to align with his expectations. So I think his needs, and so, the tools that we make available to kids, I think, are a little bit different from other districts, and the ways that teachers use them are effective. And like, one of the other things that's great about Situate is the emphasis we place on the things that are different for reading, writing, and the rest, we have an emphasis on arts, and a big emphasis on music, which, you know, speaking of someone with a science and engineering background, those things are important. You know, you can get somebody who has an excellent engineering background who can't that, because they don't have arts and music background. And I think the emphasis in the district is, is nice.
Thank you. All right, sure. Hi, AJ, nice to meet you. Thank you for all your work at Troop Sevens, one of my favorite things to do was to go to the Eagle Scout Ceremony, so we love that, so it's a great trip, so thanks for that. You talked a lot about excellence, and I'm curious, as a school committee member, how would you counsel or support superintendent to achieve his vision to have, you know, the best school system in the world?
I think the role the community, or the school committee can play is reflecting the goals of the community, right? So there's no objective truth on what's the best district in the world. The best district in the world is the one that serves its community the best, right? Some communities are going to have different expectations for preparing kids for college versus preparing kids for the trades. The best thing that the school committee can do is bring in those perspectives and make sure that they are used in every decision that the superintendent's office is making in terms of curriculum choices, when to advance, you know, what particular goals versus another one, or priorities to place on those, bringing in that community perspective by listening to the community, being active in the community. So listening input from your neighbors, I think, is everything that will help the superintendent and his office to do that job, and make sure that we are excellent. Another thing is asking probing questions to make sure that what they're doing is best. Can't let them just come in and present data and say, yeah, this is the data, and this is what it is, right? I put some of this in my, my I put some of this in my written responses as well, but there were two meetings recently where the superintendent's team came in with data, but left it kind of flat. And it wasn't clear that the data was necessarily being evaluated in the best way, like, and we had that 87% achievement rate for high school students. We didn't talk about, is this actually something that the district uses, right? This is a summary number, a summary number for across all of the district. And, you know, it's not talking about math versus English or anything like that. It's necessarily casting a gloss over everything. And on top of that, you know, leaving aside, is this even the number that we value? We didn't get, what's our target for this number, right? So on top of 87%, you know, what do we compare that to? Should we be at, or do we aspire to be at 95% or, you know, whatever it is? And what's our peer districts number? Would we consider it to be our peer districts? What do they have for this number? And so coming in and saying, yeah, we're 87%, that's great, we'll improve. But pushing on, wait a minute, what is this number and how are we using it to make sure that their thought process is complete? I think is the best thing that the committee can do. And then finding out, okay, if we're below target, what are we going to do to get there?
Thank you. Ms. Britton.
Hi. So what should a school committee member's relationship be like with superintendent, with parent, with staff?
So I think the, ideally, the superintendent and the school committee should be partners and everything. The school committee is there to represent the community and bring in the community's perspective to make sure that, you know, when the superintendent and his office and the schools are deep in the weeds in educating our kids, they don't lose sight of what's important to the community. And so I think really it's, you know, double checking superintendent's decisions to make sure that they are aligned with the community values always. I think sorry, I was deviating from bringing it in. If this, a community member brings something to the school committee, then you just pass it on to the superintendent, make sure the superintendent knows how to handle it. If it's a, you know, just a question about what's happening at one of the schools, the principal can answer it. But maybe it comes into the school committee member because they're out in the community, so they ask you a question at the grocery store or something like that. It's a different matter if, you know, a community member comes to you and says, I have this question, but I didn't feel comfortable raising it to the principal, right? Well, okay, now that's a different thing. We need to figure out why somebody didn't feel comfortable raising it to the principal and so we can explore that with the superintendent and make sure that, you know, that the school community is strong and people feel respected. Or if somebody says, I have this question, but I didn't know where to take it. That's another thing, we have to make sure it's clear communication. But in all situations, it's just a partnership ideally, because if you hire the right person and make sure you give them great feedback and make sure that they're constantly aligned with what you're expecting, then things go well.
Okay. Andrew.
Thank you for coming in. You talked a little bit about data-driven decisions. I guess in respect to the school budget, or do you, are we spending wisely? Or are there areas that you think we should allocate differently? What are your thoughts in general?
So that's something I look forward to learning more about. As well the earlier candidates mentioned, so unfortunately the case of a lot of municipal budgets, most of the budget is fixed and then there's a competition for the rest of it. There's, you know, we could have a conversation about waste and things like that, but I think it's, that's a different conversation than does our spend align with what we say our priorities are? Because the budget is what your priorities actually are. And if you are spending in a way that's not aligned with what you are saying your priorities are, then you're spending unwisely because you need to rejig your things for that. So I think having a conversation about what our priorities are or ought to be is necessary to then making the decision about whether we spend that discretionary part of the budget. And then, you know, we can take a look at, how much are we spending per student to get the level of achievement that we're seeing and compare that to what other districts are spending to get their level of achievements? And, you know, if we're spending more and achieving less, then that's something that obviously we would need to look at because that indicates that we're spending unwisely. Or if we're spending more to achieve the same, then that's something that we need to look at as well. If we're spending less to achieve more, then fantastic, that's excellent information for the district. But I think getting that information will help the data-driven process.
Your next.
Thank you, thank you for coming in. Appreciate the opportunity to speak with you. One quick question for you is, aside from the two, generally two, we have two meetings in a month, right? Well, we have three or four, but generally we have two meetings in a month. Do you have any responsibility to go along with the school committee member rather than the two meetings a month?
Yes. So I'm happy that every candidate so far said yes, because I would hope that somebody would ask questions about the kid before trying to get to the bottom.
I just say when I joined school, I had no idea. And I was a little surprised.
He's not even right.
Surprised because sometimes it takes more than the school committee. The other question is, I kind of just take every individual account, we have a lot of questions about your relationship with the superintendent and so on. And for me, my question tonight has been, why have situat been through pre-superintendent or on its third superintendent in its fifth year?
So mine is that is similar to something another candidate mentioned, which is that really we're looking at one foot in the middle, right? Hopefully, speaking. So we had one person who was only here for three years and we replaced them because they weren't a good fit. And so it's perhaps not noteworthy other than that person not being the best fit to the school so we could ask questions about exactly why did that happen? And what was the result of that happening and how do we stop that from happening again? Because, you know, having a four superintendent in seven years would be even worse. And however the numbers work out, we need consistency for the teachers. As I mentioned earlier, having upheaval in different initiatives and different priorities is something that despite the teachers' best efforts is going to undermine education. So the kids need consistency or the teachers need consistency. And so I think hopefully that will not be the case going forward and we'll look back at this period a little bit of upheaval and say, it's great that we moved on from that.
Thank you.
So we have about ten minutes for any additional questions, Tony?
Sure, I'll just go into, and again, trying to talk about the current issues and we talked about the masking a bit. You didn't touch on diversification too much. Just your thoughts on that, its role in the school system?
So Brent, I think this is something that's a lot more divisive than it needs to be. I think it's driven by social media and driven by clickbait articles that try to convince people that something has changed. It's different language, but language always evolves. What's actually happening is no different from what's happened for 30 years. The message that kids are getting today is no different from the message that I got, right? When I was going through schools, the discussion about, you know, everybody's saying, and don't look at differences, was being abandoned in favor of being different is being great, right? Because when you suppress differences or expect you're not going to acknowledge people's differences, that's hard on the people who are different. That imposes its own stresses on those people. And so, you know, communities moved away from that. Education moved away from that decades ago. It's no different than what it was before. The same thing with discussions about systemic racism. That's the same as seen in court decisions that related to busing in the seventies when they were talking about de jure racism or de jure segregation versus de facto segregation. That is just different language for systemic racism and that's 50 years ago. So the one thing that's always lacking from any of these discussions about diversity is what's actually happening in the school? Nobody's talked about, well, the teacher said this, or there was some handout that said this. It's all the same and it will continue to be the same because what we're actually trying to find is different ways to ensure that all students achieve. We don't want to have any inadvertent hurdles. And there's, nothing is part of this DEI effort that I've seen that is taking away from one student in favor of another student. It's all about trying to find, what are the things that are impeding that student? I'll take one example that I remember from the nineties, which was, you know, there was a standardized test that was just looking for, how do students write? Can they compose, you know, a simple 500-word essay or something? And nobody cared what the topic was because that wasn't important. It was, can I actually write something? And I think that the question was something like, describe what happens when you go camping? Because they wanted to make it fun, right? But if you're a student who is in the inner city and has no experience of camping, you're staring at that paper and you have no idea what to write because you don't know what happens when you go camping. And the test was not a test of, do you know what happens when you go camping? It was, can you write something? And so already you're undermining the success of some of these students with something that didn't matter, right? And so that's an example of education being inadvertently biased. So DEI is just about recognizing those examples of inadvertent bias. And again, and we're in 2021, talking about this as if it's something new, but I remember having this conversation in the nineties because that came up in the standardized test in the nineties. So again, I think we should celebrate these things. If a teacher has a handout that isn't the best, right? You know, everybody talks about, oh, I don't want the students to feel shame. I don't want the white students to feel shame when they read about what actually happened in history. Like, you know, we can all acknowledge what happened in history that was not great. If a student is feeling shamed, that's not appropriate. Let's talk about what that handout is or, you know, maybe teacher A is doing something that's different from teacher B and maybe we should do what teacher B is doing. But that should only happen if we actually see something in the schools that's inappropriate. Otherwise, whenever I hear these conversations, it's completely disconnected from what's happening in the schools, in which case it just sounds like Facebook nonsense.
I'm knowing about Facebook nonsense. Any other questions?
I do, more. AJ, aside from, we all know that diversity, equity and mass conversations are at the top of the list these days, but aside from that, what is one of the more pressing issues that you think our public school system faces today that you would like to address and add?
Yeah. So I think I spoke earlier about making sure that the community's concerns about excellence of education are addressed. You know, we've got at least that one data point that suggests that something changed. But I think everybody has their questions about whether U.S. News is anything reliable. But it's always one data point, we should collect data at better data points. And so I mentioned earlier that we've got to make sure that the regular initiatives of making sure that students' achievement is on par with what they expect is there as well as making sure that education stays up to date with what jobs our students want, right? All our students, whether it's, as I mentioned earlier, people going to college or not, and all of the different options for people not going to college. Automation is something that's kind of, I know that, I work with artificial intelligence companies every day. More and more things that can be done easily, which is by giving a simple instruction are going to be automated, including things that couldn't be automated 10 years ago and things that couldn't be automated 20 years ago. Creativity in all of its different forms needs to be a necessary part of education, whether it's through, you know, project-based learning or self-directed learning or things like that, because all of the jobs of the future are going to depend on being able to research effectively, deal with ambiguity and other ways of applying creativity to a problem, whether you're, you know, in a office job or not. Because robotics and automation will, during our student's lifetime, have a significant impact on what jobs are available to them. So we need to ensure that as we improve our curriculum, we're also keeping an eye on the future.
Thank you, very. Very good. Thank you very much for coming in. We appreciate you putting your hat in the ring.
Great, thank you very much.
And now we have Lori Smith Pro. How are you tonight?
Good, good.
So you got the three questions? Introduce yourself.
I think I do now, I'll tell you. Hopefully. Thank you very much. Thank you all of you, first of all, for your unselfish service to the town. It definitely goes recognized by me and a lot of other people in the community. And maybe it's not all we said and some people come forward and have criticisms and feedback, but we all appreciate everything that you all do, so thank you. And it would be an honor to sit at the table with all of you, knowing that I think there's some pretty high standards here, so thank you. I've been a situat parent and citizen here for 16 years and I've put two children through the school system already. One is just graduating from college and is working back home again. And I have a 20-year-old who's a junior in college and we also have a 10-year-old who's in fifth grade in Halloway. We also, I also have two stepchildren, so we have five children together. And publication is very important to me, to my husband, to our family. And situat schools are very important to us. I've sat through school committee meetings and budget sessions over the years. I did sit on those too, I don't think my name was mentioned in this, right? So way back, you know, we talked about, you know, three superintendents, I think I've sat through five superintendents. You know, back when even Laura was on school committee and I think there's, I've listened and I've learned and I think that I've been asked for a long time to join the school committee and I've thought about it. And I've also had people say, why would you want to do that? See, so you'd get both sides of it, even right now with this position here. I've had people saying, Laura, you should definitely go for that. And then the other side is saying, why would you want that? And it's something that's important to me. And academic excellence is important and being inclusive, all those goals that we have. I've spent a lot of time recently looking through that school committee handbook and the manual that we have. It's a lot of information in there, but that's really where it is, that everything is in there and we are guided by the state. So I understand that part where this board is a little bit different than, you know, some other boards in town, because you have to follow the state guidelines. But I'm actually going to go off a little bit differently than maybe my original plan after listening yesterday and today. And I think what we need and what we have to put at this seat here is someone, we heard seven now eight different people coming forward with strong opinions. And we somehow have to realize that that is what our community is. So somehow we need somebody to come forward and bring that all together. Because there was very strong opinions in all different ways. And it doesn't mean that one is right or wrong, but we do need to listen to all of that. But we're here for the kids and the number one thing is the children. And I don't know if I actually heard that enough last night or tonight, is that we're here for the kids and we represent the community, but we have to listen to all the views in the community. And we certainly heard them all last night and tonight. So somehow we need to bring that together and move forward. And yeah, the next question. We're talking about eight months. In eight months, you will barely get your feet wet in this. So absolutely, I would put my name in again because you are just learning. I know there's like an eight-hour even instruction from the state, I believe, that you have to take a course to even learn everything from negotiations to budgets to all of that. So in eight months, you would really just get going and learning and working as a team with the other members and of course with the selectmen, with the, or select board.
We still triple.
Select board, school committee, we should name those.
I couldn't do it. Mike.
Thanks for coming, Laura.
Thank you.
Obviously, you've been a constant for nine plus years I've been on the school committee. I think you've been, yeah, like you said, you've been at our meetings for as long as I've been. as long as I've been on this side of the table. You mentioned that you're going to get your feet wet in the first eight months, but, you know, having that history, what role do you want to play in that eight months to stand out in the election next year? And, you know, what do you hope to accomplish?
I think I actually just said a little bit of that. It's about bringing this together in the town, because we have a wonderful town. We really do. And we're lucky to live here. We have, this is actually my first time in this building tonight, but we've made so much improvement into infrastructure and how we have that Hathaway cushion situation going on as well to think about. But just, actually, can you repeat? I want to make sure I answer that.
Yeah, so taking things like policy or budget or something like that, like, how do you want to put a stamp on something like that in the first eight months to stand out?
Well, I just always am important. Anyone that's seen me in the history is that I've always asked for line items way back. I've wanted detail. I stood up at town meetings. I stood up at school committee meetings, and things were lumped into $60,000 other. Like, what does that mean? Like, what is other? And then I wanted to dig into more information on some of those line items. So definitely fight in transparency of that. I love, I think I spoke up at the last school committee meeting as far as, you know, the curriculancy, that data-driven piece of it. So transparency and budget are definitely top of my list and they always have been.
Thank you. Hi. Thank you. Hey, Lori.
Hi.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
My question is, you've been involved with a lot of things for a long time. What is the, what was the aha moment? What was the incident? What was the effort? And what was the need that you saw that you wanted to engage in this town?
It's a good time for me as far as family life goes. We have older children, one's back home again. My husband's traveling from work before, and he's not as much anymore. And our youngest is 10, so I'm not running after a toddler anymore, which I was during some of those times that I was speaking up and trying to get more information. And I was able to juggle a lot, but now I feel like I'm in a better place, actually. And I think everything happens for a reason. Where before, maybe it wasn't my time. I've spent the past couple of years, I got introduced to a business that I've been doing. It's actually out of my home, but that, sorry, work out of my home. And I'm now mentoring a team of 700 people, and it's a growing business, but it's something that I've learned a lot. I've actually got a mindset coach in the past year, and I've learned that you have two years, one month for a reason, and you really have to listen. And that's something that I've, I think even, I've come a long way with you. You know, the answer that I may have had five years ago has probably evolved as well. You know, that we're supposed to evolve as people. And it's not, that's a piece that comes with this, and it's listening and learning and wanting to hear more and being open to listening to everyone in the community.
There's one more.
Hi. I want you also to name some strengths that the district has and things that we can be proud of. The people. I mean, number one is that we have great teachers. And I think that as much as I dig into budgets and numbers and what, how much of this is of, how much of this school budget is of the town and how it can work together with the town, I think is super important. But we have great people and teachers. And so retention of the teachers, I think, is important. And I know we have a lot of new teachers right now, but we want to make sure that we keep teachers that have strengths. We don't want them to go away. We want them, we want to keep growing. And I should have brought this up earlier, but my first statement actually is, what we have right now with a new administration and new people on board, it is energizing and it's positive, and I'm excited. I mean, I really am. I mean, that's one of the reasons why I'm sitting here to tell you that, is that I would want to work with everyone that's there right now in a positive way to move our school district forward and come together. Because I think we do all, I mean, we have to get there, but we are all here for the kids. And that's what we have to figure out when we're moving forward and keep going.
Great, thanks. Ms. Karen.
Hi, Lori.
Hi.
You've had the opportunity, you're a good seat here, being number eight, watching a lot of people, so I'd ask you a very different question. If you had to campaign for your seat, why would you be the best choice to the boarders?
Now, I'm going to go back to here. So I think, I hope, we all have an equal vote, but I'll be sitting on this side. So I think, I think that I could get along with everyone at the table, but I think I could also bring, have a chance to maybe bring a different point of view and be okay with that. And that is okay for me and Janice to have a different point of view, me and Mike, but at the end, we are all a team. But to talk it out a little bit, to hear what another side has to say, I've actually seen it happen on this side. I've seen Karen and Andrew have, they were against each other in a race, and now I see you working together nicely. Sometimes it happens, sometimes it happens to be midway, is just where I'm getting at on that. But it might not be a right answer or a wrong answer. So our little cartoon, and someone saw a six and someone saw a nine. One's looking one way, one's looking another. We all have a different story. We do. And you have to listen to those stories, you know, whether it's mass or diversity or your upbringing. You know, I come from a family where, you know, my dad's a Democrat, my mom's a Republican, and they've been married for 56 years. And that's okay. And that's like, you know, there's no politics here as far as, you know, as local politics. But you have to listen to each other and you come together, and then you move forward. And you don't, you don't have to hold budgets either.
So you're the best choice because you can collaborate well?
Collaboration. But I'm okay asking, asking questions. I'm comfortable with that. I have a thick skin. Thick-skinned Enneagram 8, if anyone has ever studied the Enneagram. That was also one of our little COVID things that we worked on was really getting to know. There's no, everyone has a different number, one to eight, and there's not a bad number. But once you get to know what you are, I mean, it would be fun to even figure out everyone on the board, like, what, how do you work together as a team? And it's working as a team that's super important.
Ms. Bradley. Hi, Lori.
Hi.
So I put it down a little deeper. So in the theme of listening to views, I'm just curious your take on this scenario. So, you know, I'm a listener for a living, and this dumps me oftentimes on this board, and it's something I'm frustrated with. So, you know, so say you have a group of parents that feel strongly about any issue, and they have the opportunity to have public comment at a school committee meeting and emailing and all access communication-wise to communicate, be heard, share their opinions, thus being listened to. And obviously, multiple sides to different issues. At the end of the day, during a meeting, a decision is made that one group isn't happy with, and feedback is, you're not a good listener. You didn't agree with me, so you're not a good listener. So how do we, as a school committee, kind of work through those challenges?
You're going to agree, and we're going to disagree, and then you're going to come together as a team after. But you're not, I don't agree with my husband 100% of the time. And that's the way it is, you know, people in the community have to realize that. I mean, you can't, but you have to move forward for the children, for excellence, for inclusiveness. You know, we haven't talked about that at all, but being inclusive, that's all in our manual as well. And inclusiveness not even like, as far as diversity, but different points of view, that's can be, that is also included in that as well. But you, you can't, you have to make your decision and be okay with it, and then you have to move on. Like, you can't lose sleep over these things. You're doing, we're all humans. So we are, you're not paid, you're all volunteers, and it's okay. And we are, we're going to make mistakes. Everyone, you know, you're going to make mistakes, you're going to change, you're going to evolve. And what do you think today? I'll give you an example of, you know, years ago, I was a fan of starting school after Labor Day. I've evolved. I would vote probably to start it before Labor Day, because things have changed now. A lot of people have, are starting before Labor Day. Again, that goes to contract negotiations, I realize, all of that piece as well. But I'm just saying, things do change, and that's why you make a decision for what's right right now, is what I was getting to on that. And then in a few years, it might be different.
Mr. Goodrich. Thank you for coming forward. My question, it's a little different as well, too. You talk about, it's really about the kids and also the teachers. So I'd hear more about, I think you're involved at, you've gone through the whole system, but I've kind of asked this a little bit, but what do our teachers need? What have you seen and done? And you can kind of expand a bit more about our teachers in general, what, what your involvement is.
Yeah, so I've been involved in a lot of ways with the teachers. I remember going into kindergarten class with my youngest, and I got in there in open house, and there was a sheet there for the room parent. And I said to Mr. Tarpe, I said, I've done this like 20 times, but if you need me, I will do it. And then the sheet was blank, and I was the room parent. So I continued to have that nice relationship with the teachers. I was the president of Shore at the high school level for a few years. Even after my high schooler graduated, I continued on to be the president of Shore because there wasn't anyone to take over yet. And I, that was something that was important to me, that that organization continued on until Jonielle took it over in the back. So I appreciate that. It wasn't something I was just going to let go because there weren't enough volunteers. So I continued on even after I didn't have a high schooler, and that's grants for teachers. That was, you know, tomorrow, I've been helping all week for the concession stand for the football games, which is run by Shore. So we haven't had football concessions for two years now. So the last person to run it was me. I only have a fifth grader, but I'll be there tomorrow night just to make sure it's all set. That money all goes back to the teachers. I, I, my daughter was a freshman in college, my son was a junior, and I had a child in elementary school. And I remember getting a call from someone at the high school office, and they said, Lori, can you run a teacher appreciation luncheon at the high school? So I was still had that piece, it was, I was, you know, still the piece of Shore. And I said, yes, yes, I can. So that makes me feel good, is that people can look to me and say, she can get it done. And I just collected the money or other resources, and I just, and I did that for them, even though I didn't have anyone at the school. That was for the teachers. So teachers are critical. So it's pretty, you know, you're working with the superintendent and the administration, but the teachers are, they're the ones in the classroom with our kids on a daily basis. So we really, we appreciate them. We need to know what they need. We need to let them do their job. That's the other piece as far as administration, too, is that we don't, we don't need to micromanage administration. I don't think that's our job in the school board. It's need to build the policies, and it's the superintendent's job to, to lead. He's the leader. We're the board, and that is like a sounding board. You know, he goes to the school committee, the school committee will go to him, and it's a sounding board, a back and forth of the communication piece.
Ms. Peter Gates.
Hi, Lori. Thanks for coming. Again, just like, it's good to see you. It'll be interesting to see if you guys are on this side of the table at some point, because truly put your time in. Into more open meetings than me, I think. So with that being said, if you were to join, are you aware of the outside responsibilities other than just the Monday night meetings?
Yes.
Good. And lastly, I kind of scaled on my question from last night to tonight, but since you've actually been probably longer, you've been through five superintendents.
Maybe Laura can tell me.
Oh, don't make that up.
So why have we had such a turn of open superintendency?
That's a good question. I mean, I'd actually like to look at other towns and see what's going on there and compare. I mean, I think that maybe there's some data that we can look at and see what's going on, why we're not maintaining them. But I would like to see, I'd like to see this one stay for a while. Five is a lot to go through. So it would be nice to, I mean, to why I would probably put my name in, is that I'd like to see some consistency, so we can actually move forward, because you can take, you can take three steps forward, and then you start over again, you take two steps back. And we need to keep pushing forward. I was actually looking at data that came today from the Mr. Burkhead's newsletter, and I love that Mistress Go put in there some of that data. So I did go on the city website, and I tried to look to see, like, where are we at? And I tried to quickly put in some other towns around us to see, like, the comparison, and then, you know, we're here, you know, here I have a chart that's like this, we're about here right now. But over here is your highest level, so we are listed right here. And I do think because that's a state website, that's probably a good one to go off of instead of some other, you know, Boston Magazine or US News, even though I have stated those numbers. But, you know, when you can compare the state numbers and you see where you're at in evaluation, I think that's a good way to look at it. But as far as a superintendent, I mean, I would love, I just think.
I haven't had it somewhere, I just can't find the idea. I haven't had a local superintendent. Yeah, their current, their current tenure. I think the average superintendent is like four or five years.
Yeah.
No, 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 but, no, but the local superintendency is higher. And I had it, I had, I just, I'm having a problem asking right now.
So we're shooting for five years?
No. We're shooting.
That would be good.
No, true to me, the vast district in the world, but having the longest tenure.
So that could have been my high school superintendent, my native public schools. I remember him being on that forever. So I don't know if things might have changed now. It seems like the superintendents don't stay as long. But we need, we need this one to stay for a while, to try to check off those goals. We have goals. Every time you run in a new administration, they have to spend the first year looking at everything, and that's it. So that, that takes a lot of time.
Thank you.
All right, so we have a few minutes for any follow-up questions, and who's sort of tracing us over there.
Yeah, I'd love to know, we've asked this before a little bit on kind of like leadership style, I think I touched upon it a little bit, but I'd love to hear more about, like, start a business, how, how does that, what's your leadership style, or how do you think that could kind of play out being on a, like, a telephone.
So I would have to see what the, what the rules are as far as getting public feedback is, but something that I've done with my business and my team. is, but something that I've done with my business and my team is that they know every Tuesday at 10:00 AM, I'm on a Zoom. And if they need help or if they want to reach out to me, I'm available to them. So all summer long, it was Tuesdays at 10:00 and Thursdays at 12:00. So I know if, I haven't seen anyone do it in a while, but if there's any way of doing any type of open office hours, so people know that you are available. Again, I would have to, social media is crazy and it's, there's so much out there, but you also have to realize that those are opinions out there. Maybe people are afraid to come forward, but maybe if you were sitting in a room somewhere and someone felt comfortable talking to you, I think that, that's a good way to get some, because you are representing the community. I mean, you work with the administration and you are there for the children, but your role is really to represent the community. And that's an important piece. So just finding out what the community is feeling. I mean, I think we've heard it for the past two days, like I said, and it's, it's a lot. There's a lot of different views out there and none of them are bad. They're just different. And that's part of being inclusive is really listening to those other views.
Any more?
Lori, um, part, another role of the school committee right is taking part in the negotiation process along with the superintendent, his staff with the teachers' union. And being a steward of the taxpayers and your long time support and backing of the teachers, how would you approach that negotiating process?
Well, I know for the first eight months, and I'm getting my feet wet here, is that that wouldn't be a role of mine because there are two people that are in that role. So I really have to do my research into, I would want to really look into that piece of it. I think you do want to make the, you want to keep the retention. And I think I touched on that earlier, is that that piece of it, you know, sometimes you have to, both sides have to give a little with anything, is that you want to meet somewhere, you want to give in when you can, but, but stay strong on some things that are important to the district. I think, I think I wrote down, in all my notes, bargaining in good faith was something that I liked, that I read. And I thought that was a good way to put it, that, you know, you're representing, you are representing the taxpayers as a community. This community represents the taxpayers. So bargaining in good faith, I think, is a good way to think about it.
Thanks. Anybody else? Well, thank you for coming in.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
And thank all the candidates for their candor and their willingness to answer all of these questions, not only of us live on TV, but the written answers that you all provided. And we have committed to publishing those documents online. We will take out people's email addresses and any, you know, sort of, or cell phone numbers, whatever, but we think it's important that the whole community gets to see not only the interviews in person, but the documentation that everyone supplied for us. So there should be no question, in my mind at least, that everyone in the community is going to get to see everything that we all as a joint committee have seen and heard. So thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
We have a little housekeeping to do. If we want, if we want your attention, that Yonk Report is, starts on sundown, which is 6:52 on September 15th. And we had scheduled this meeting to start at 6:30, the, the next meeting to start at 6:30, which obviously won't work. So we have a couple of alternatives. We could, number one, push the meeting to the next week. We could push the meeting up to 5:30 that afternoon with the understanding that it would at least be my preference that we not have to stop, stop our discussions, we have to start up again. So I think those, that's sort of where we are. We could either move it to a different date, which entails a certain amount of having to juggle the room, et cetera, et cetera, and all of our schedules. It took a couple of months to actually put this all together. So it's not easy to get this many people with all the obligations you all have together. So if, and maybe this will help you think about it, the, what we're gonna do now is we've asked every committee member to rank the candidates from one date, one being the top, eight being the lowest. And Lorraine, if you get them to her by the end of business day on Monday, she will compile the results and then we can discuss those results. And I want to make it clear to everyone, these are not votes. These are simply each individual's impression as to which candidate they will rank, number one in their mind, number two, number three. It worked for us when we put the diversity and equity committee together and that was even more complicated because we had like six positions that we had to fill or compile. So this is much simpler and I think it would form the basis of the discussion whenever it is we decide we want to meet.
So I would ask actually that we don't move the meeting out a week because we have a school committee meeting on the 20th. Obviously, the governor has a 10-1 end date of business mandate. We want to get someone in as soon as we can so they can have a role in that discussion and ultimate vote that we make.
All right, that's you. Anyone else want to chime in?
Well, it took a long time to get these meetings scheduled. I think we should stay with the schedule. And just earlier, like we discussed last night.
Yeah. I just don't know how long the, the discussion will go. I really have no idea. It could be 15 minutes or an hour. I don't really have any expectation on how long it's gonna take, so I don't know, but I'm fine with moving the time back.
Well, what did the diversity discussion take once we actually, it really didn't take that long.
Well, we had a big six people.
Yeah.
So it was a ranking. You know, I think, I agree Mike, that we want to get it done as quickly as possible. And if Peter is fine with doing it earlier, if we have to stop and do it at the time, we have to do it. But I would expect we could get it done in, in an hour and 15 minutes.
Well, I'm going to think we could be disciplined enough to get it done. If it's that important to get it done, then we can be disciplined enough to get it done.
And what's the reason why we can't stay at 6:30? Part of my aim was, is sundown. So Yonk Report starts at sundown on that date and it goes to the next sundown. And sundown on that date, I looked it up, is 6:52. So we need to be done.
6:30?
Six, 6:45, 7:00.
Yeah, that's what I would think, 6:45.
I move, we move it to 5:30 on that day.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm not necessarily about me, it's just in general.
No, I think we're trying, I just want to make sure we don't rush the conversation as well because we had eight fabulous candidates that came forward and they all deserve some deliberation.
I agree, but as a town as we determine that DEI is important, you want me to be aware there are holidays out there.
Oh, I'm not saying not to respect that. I, that is not my intention at all. I'm just saying, I don't want to rush our conversation to be constrained to an hour, right? So if we haven't finished, then we are gonna have to schedule a subsequent meeting. That is what I'm saying. Please don't put words in my mouth.
Well, in doing so, we are likely not to make the October 20th.
Okay, if we can't do early, 5:30, is this a scheduling issue? Again, we don't want to rush it. I have no idea how long it's gonna take. Like I said, it could be a consensus in two minutes and be done. It could go on for three hours. I really have no idea.
There's no one in this group that's gonna not make the decision if they're not ready to do it. So let's, let's start that and if we have to go on after, we'll do it tonight. We can do it.
Yeah, I'm fine if we can make a decision next week. Well, I would, I think so.
It's my money. I'm not saying, all I'm saying is I don't want us to rush.
No, no.
I agree.
But I think we're all moved at doing that this long time and we can all work together.
Well, I can ask everyone here tonight to commit to the next night if we're able to get a room. Sorry to ask.
What goes to one?
We start at seven o'clock.
Okay, so seven o'clock the next night.
It would have to be after seven. Any chance, Lorraine, or?
They're asking me about September 16th, Thursday night, a room at 7:00. I have to look into that.
Well, then I would like to ask if, I mean, I'm sure I could find a room somewhere.
Can I ask a question? Is, is Miss Kimpf, is she, is she part of the board or is it just here?
She will be here.
Okay.
She will be here.
Okay.
So she's gonna listen, she's gonna watch the videos of all this and then she'll participate as well.
Okay.
And Laura is going to be probably in Colorado, we think, or not?
Yeah, I mean, that's why 5:30 doesn't really work for me. I'll figure out how to do that. So I scheduled my vacation on the next episode, so it's okay.
Would you, would you rather just start at 7:00 the next night? Is that easier?
No, doesn't matter. Just keep it, it's fine. We'll figure it out. It's not about me, so we'll just figure it out.
All right, so I'll ask a question one more time. Is everyone on this, this joint committee right now willing to say that if we can't find an answer on Wednesday night, that we will come back on Thursday after 7:00?
Yes.
Wherever we have to be.
If you're gonna get there, yeah, just to close this up.
Well, I don't want to go to Zoom after. No, we're, we're sticking with what we, we're sticking with the format.
It's 4:50 in the schools.
Maybe they'll let us go to
There's a mask mandate, though.
I'm sure we'll, yeah, I just have to double check.
Yeah. All right. Sorry, Seth, this is gonna be a problem.
I'm sure it's gonna, I'm sure it's gonna be done by the 50.
So, and I just want to say, and I don't mean this to be fresh, but don't try to pump Lorraine for any advanced information as to what it's looking like. I really want everyone to see it at the same time on Wednesday night and then we'll go for that.
Monday.
No, Wednesday night. She's gonna hand out the, the tab.
Oh, okay, I thought you had said earlier that she was gonna
It has to get to her by Monday.
It has to get to her by Monday. She needs like a day because she has other work to do to make sure that we compile it.
If we want to expedite the meeting, we should get the data before the meeting because we're all gonna spend 20 minutes trying to
So that's true.
So we could probably send it out, Lori, maybe on, you know, the night, the afternoon of.
Sure, I already think my end of business on Monday. I'm sure I can send it out by, you know, end of business on Tuesday, it's a late night anyway.
All right.
And we don't have a select meeting that night, so.
And I would ask everyone to keep it confidential. We don't want there to be speculation out there as to who's winning the quote unquote board race because it's not a vote. It's simply a preference and we'll have a discussion about it because people may have very strong reasons for preferring one candidate over another one. And it's not gonna be an easy decision because we have eight really qualified, excellent good citizens who are willing to, you know, put themselves forward. So is there any other business that needs to come before?
Just thank you to all the candidates for coming in. It's, it's tough to get on TV and, and talk, answer, you know, questions that you're really not prepared for. I think y'all did a great job.
All right, do you want your motion to rejoin the select board here?
So move.
Same move by Mr. Van Nady, on favor?
Aye.
Or not the motion?